Good afternoon, welcome to the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk begin with a roll call?
Councilman DeCecio. Councilmember Garcia. Councilwoman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Thank you.
And this is Sal.
We have an interpreter, Mario Barajas. Oh, Councilman DeCecio?
I'm on the line as well, Mayor, thank you.
DeCecio has joined us. We have an interpreter here, Mario Barajas. Mario, will you introduce yourself?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, my name is Mario Barajas. I will be serving as today's interpreter. I will introduce myself now to the Spanish speakers. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Barajas. Yo voy a estar sirviendo como el intérprete para la junta de hoy, gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mario, for your service. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance number G6765 through 6770, S47067 through 47126, and 47129, and resolutions 21879 through 21881.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor, have you had a chance to review the formal meeting minutes from November 6, 2019?
I have, Mayor.
Wonderful, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. I have a motion to move November 6, 2019 approval of the minutes, meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Minutes pass unanimously. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion to approve Mayor and City Council Board and Commission nominations?
Yes, Mayor, I have a motion to approve Mayor and City Council Board and Commission nominations.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, signal nay. Passes unanimously, congratulations to the many Phoenix residents who will serve our city. We are grateful for your service. I will next turn to our city attorney to discuss the role of public comment in the city council meeting. Chris Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items to be discussed. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made during the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. Speakers must present their comments in respectful and courteous manner. Profane language and personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules can lose their opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor license applications?
Yes, we, I have a motion to approve items 3 through 15.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, a motion to approve items 16 through 107, except the following: Items 17, 18, 24, 27, 35, 56, 57, and 76. Items 23 and 68 have been continued to December 2, 2020. Item 28 is revised, and excluding these items for public comment: 19, 20, 22, 45, 46, and 62.
Wonderful, thank you, Vice Mayor. Any council additions or comments on the motion? Do we have a second?
I will move to second.
Fabulous, roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
We move to item 17, our membership with Arizona Forward, our great partners on so many things, from canal revitalization to Rio Reimagined. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item 17.
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Williams, any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 7-2.
Thank you. We move to item 18, the North American Region of Airport Council International Membership Dues. Do we have a motion?
Yes. Motion to approve item 18.
Second.
Any council member comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 7-2.
Let's take item 19 and 20 together there, both lawsuit settlements, which were pulled from the consent agenda for public comment. Do we have a motion on items 19 and 20?
Motion to approve items 19 and 20.
Second.
We have one member of the public to address the council on the settlements, Amy Meglio.
Yes, hi, I just wanted to, in general, discuss settlements for the year 2017 to 2018 for the Phoenix Police Department. The City of Phoenix paid out $208,900,000 in cases brought to Phoenix.
We are taking testimony on whether the city council should approve these items, which include a water leak settlement.
My apologies.
Thank you. Any council member comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you, and certainly our condolences to the Cordova family for the water main leak that impacted their home. Now, we move to item 22, which is an exciting partnership, a development agreement with Taiwan Semiconductor Manufacturing Company. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, this is a fun one, motion to approve item 22.
Second.
Thank you. Any council members' comments?
Mayor, just quickly, I want to thank you personally for all the hard work you did to get this business to our great city, so kudos to you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Stark. It has certainly been a team effort. A little over a year ago, we were both in Taiwan. Thank you to our sister cities team for putting together that delegation. We had the chance to meet with executives from TSMC, which is based in Hinshu, Taiwan. They had announced that they wanted to conduct an advanced semiconductor fab facility and were interested in a North American location. Many communities pursued it, and I am honored that they chose Phoenix, Arizona, for this important investment. It's a $12 billion total capital investment with a $16 billion economic impact, one of the largest in our state's history, and it could not come at a better time since we are about to emerge from the year of 2020 and have a lot of folks ready to get back to work. We expect 1,900 high-tech direct jobs and thousands of indirect jobs in the semiconductor ecosystem, with construction planned to start in early 2021. I want to thank the amazing team that put it together and made this deal possible, including the wonderful leadership team at TSMC, Sandra Watson and her team at the Arizona Commerce Authority, Chris Camacho and his team at GPIC, our city team, which is a crew drop, true cross-departmental team led by community and economic development, but including Planning Streets, Waters, City Manager's Office, and so many others. It was led by the amazing Chris Mackey, who has such expertise in semiconductors and has been working so hard on things. Thank you to Chris and your entire team. We worked with the U.S. Department of Commerce, who helped us, working with us in Taiwan, the American Institute of Taiwan, the city staff of Taipei, Taiwan, who was with us during our visit and helped us navigate the region. So, a great success across so many levels of government and helping Arizona and Phoenix become a leader in advanced manufacturing. Thank you.
May I just have one comment on that?
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I also want to thank you for your leadership on this and everyone that went on that trip. I think it's very exciting that right now, like in these times that we're living in, given that so many workers right now are out of, are out of a job and thinking that they will be able to fill in in a lot of these amazing jobs that are going to be good jobs for a lot of these workers. I think, I think it's exciting, I think it's a, it's a good time for Phoenix, but I think it's very telling, the leadership at the City of Phoenix, starting, starting with you, Mayor, and then with everyone else under you. I think it's exciting to see such good jobs coming into the city and making sure that, you know, like a lot of these workers are able to get in, to be able to get into these jobs and have it be an exciting time for everyone, thank you.
Thank you so much. And we're going to have amazing partnership with our education institutions to make sure we have that great semiconductor workforce continuing, as well as our amazing construction trades, who are going to be very busy in Phoenix. Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Councilwoman, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just couldn't tell if you could see me waving. I just wanted to thank, I just wanted to thank everybody that helped with this project because it took a regional approach and coordination, and of course, under your leadership, you were able to bring it together, and the staff that really worked on these elements to make it happen as quickly as it did, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman, roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Great job, Mayor, yeah.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Wonderful, a great day for Phoenix, thank you all. We next move to item 24, which is the proposed 77th Avenue and Glass Lane Annexation Public Hearing. We will open the public hearing. We do not have any members of the public wishing to address the council today, so I will close the public hearing. No action will be taken today, it will be on a future council agenda. We next moved to item 27, the adoption of the ordinance establishing the Office of Accountability and Transparency. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item number 27 is for ordinance G6770, an ordinance establishing the governing language for Office of Accountability and Transparency by creating a new chapter 20 of the Phoenix City Code and establishing an effective date.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance as posted in today's packet with the, with the, I am so sorry, my motion is, I move to adopt the ordinances as posted in today's packet.
Second.
Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor.
Mayor. Yes, Mayor. In speaking to some of my colleagues, I understand that there are some concerns on two sections, so I want to offer the substitute motion. I move to adopt the ordinance as posted in today's packet with the following changes. Section 20-5, Oats staff, section D should read, neither the director nor any employees at the Oats office nor their immediate family members shall be, shall have formerly been employees of any Arizona law enforcement agency. Section E, number four, should read, any such attorney cannot have personally participated in a lawsuit against the City of Phoenix or department within the past five years.
Second.
Thank you. So, we have a substitute motion and a second from Councilwoman Pastor and Vice Mayor Guardado. We have 40 members of the public here to address the council on this particular agenda item. We will begin with A.J. Marsden, followed by Dr. Ann Hart.
Hello, Mayor and council members, I am A.J. Marsden. While eating lunch, I saw the PPD Facebook training video on race relations between communities and our police officers. The community speakers said, "Communication and relationships are key." Communication and relationships go both ways. Please ensure that our Oats and CRB plans foster communication and relationships between our communities and our police. Please be sure that our Oats and CRB that claim to provide accountability and transparency are not formed and run in isolation and secrecy without open communication between the community and our police. This will ensure safety for all communities and our officers. Think about this, criminals by definition don't obey the law. The job of our officers is to enforce the laws that criminals break, and criminals don't follow the same policies our police officers follow. Criminals don't want to be caught, yet one man did recently thank Officer Caro for arresting him. Criminals will not have an Oats or CRB overseeing them. What if some of the attention, energy, and funding allocated for the Oats and CRB were instead directed to the community to build up block watches, designate more crime-free multi-housing, and educate businesses about safe biz? These programs provide communication and relationship building between communities and our police officers. Let's really work to make an impact on Phoenix, let's reduce crime, let's write more block watch grants, get involved with the chief's advisory boards, and seek out and take advantage of what schools, city agencies, and nonprofits already offer. Let's be sure that our Oats and CRB have open communication and build relationships between our communities and our police. And I'll end by saying what I always say. I'm more than happy to chat with others, and I'm not hard to find, thank you.
Thank you. We are having trouble connecting with Dr. Hart, so we will go to Mary Rose Wilcox, followed by Camille Johnson.
Mayor, before Mary Rose goes, I'm just, I'm just getting a bunch of messages that, that the meeting is not being broadcast, broadcasted live, and I'm not sure if there's someone that can look into that.
Wonderful. And, and Vice Mayor, is it working on YouTube?
Mayor.
Or, well, actually, our staff respond, please.
Mayor, this is the city manager. So, we are having problems with Cox Fiber Optics, so Channel 11 on cable, Cox Cable, and also on whatever CenturyLink is now. Channel 11 is not on television, but our web broadcast through YouTube and the city's channel is live and is available. So, for people to watch, they need to go through the internet connection, not through Cox Cable or CenturyLink.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, very good, very good call. So, I believe we are going to Mary Rose Wilcox, and then we will go to Camille Johnson.
Community advocate, I am here in full support of the ordinance going forward. I do think the substitute is fine, but I hope the whole ordinance gets heard also. OAT is very, very important to this community. I have been in the council when we had, we had Mallory, we had Valeria, we had Buchanan incidents, they were all shootings, and there was no transparency at that time. We tried very hard as city council to bring about a review board. We failed, we did bring about a police review board with citizens within the department, but the time has changed, we need this as never before. We need to stop the unrest in our community. We need to assure our citizens that they will be represented and they will have full accountability and transparency. So, I commend all of you for looking at this, for bringing it forward, for your funding vote on February 25, and I ask you to please address this and once and for all get on the road to a full civilian review board so we can bring peace to our community, and our community will feel they have justice and will be treated equitably. I urge you to do this, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. But as a former city councilwoman, and as somebody who has gone through many, many instances in the community where the community felt that they were not being given information or treated fairly, this will go a long way in achieving that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your testimony, we will go to Camille Johnson, and we will see if we can get Dr. Hart again after, Camille Johnson.
Hello, Council and Mayor Gallego. I could go on and on about the failures of this policy, but I just want to read these words from Councilmember Pastor that she said back on February 25, the day of the vote to pass the creation of Model B, which is now Oats and CRB, and I quote, "There are a lot of details about Model B that need to be worked out. There needs to be a collective of everyone that is affected by this process to have their voices heard and be part of the process. My vote is not here for a headline, my vote is not also about my ego. My vote is about willing to have change and willing to build a model that is solid that protects everyone. Do you still stand by these words, Councilmember Pastor? What happened to involving everyone that will be affected by Oats and CRB in the creation of the policy? You know this policy isn't what families that have lost loved ones to the police want. You know you didn't include community leaders like VD from Bodega in Action and Miriam and Jamar from DIA London's Metro when you all drafted this. Even with the motions that you just added to change the language slightly, this policy is still a failure. If your vote is truly not about headlines or your ego, vote no. Otherwise, you will betray the community members you elected to represent. Thank you."
Thank you. We will go to Dr. Hart, followed by Bataki and Barison. I am still unable to hear Dr. Hart.
Mayor, it appears that we are having audio issues.
All right, then we will go to Bataki and apologize on the name pronunciation, followed by Amy Meglio.
Rather than hold those accountable for our safety to a higher standard, we continue to lower the bar that we hold for our fellow citizens. Police can continue to harm and kill innocent civilians and receive paid leave while peaceful protesters are wrongfully arrested, put at risk during a pandemic, and killed while unarmed. Why are police pay and benefits outlined more than the consequences for harming and extinguishing human life? Why are you continuing to disregard our recommendations at the expense of our safety and our lives? This is lit service to communities that just want safety for themselves and for their families. Until we break down and rebuild Phoenix PD, whose main purpose seems to be harming Black, Brown, Indigenous, queer, and low-income folks, then it's the city council's duty to support your people and hold them accountable for the harm that they continue to cause. Thousands of studies across the country and the world have provided thousands of reforms that would benefit public safety, reduce the cost of policing, and ensure positive relationships between departments and the public. But instead, we prohibit many groups of community members who have called out injustices from joining the Office of, quote, "Accountability and Transparency", quite literally preventing true accountability. Additionally, Oats' current basis includes the ability for evidence to be withheld with sufficiently detailing, another quote. Why, when we need oversight of a department, one that has a history of defending its officers from consequences, do we have a way of withholding evidence written in to the basis of Oats? And that is supposed to show transparency. We continue to add more and more research, like yesterday's agenda items, which supposedly bring an academic aspect into police assessments, while simultaneously ignoring the results. It's time that you, the council, start listening to your constituents who live their lives in fear and take more steps to protect the people that you're supposed to stand for. I yield my time.
Thank you. Amy is next, followed by Teri Becker.
Hello, everyone, I'm Amy Meglio. Some of you already know me from the Grassroots Law Project, Defund the Police series. Others, hi. So, much to the chagrin of the community that I am generally in ideological alignment with, I'm here today to speak in full proponents of item number 27. Do I believe that community leaders such as VD and others really should have been consulted? Absolutely. Do I believe community participation and investigatory powers must be integral components of the, of the OAT moving forward? Yes, I do, but I and the Grassroots Law Project would like to thank everybody on the council who worked together to, to push this forward. Because the fact of the matter is, is that there are a lot of people in power who didn't want this to happen and didn't want this agenda item to get this far and fought it every step of the way. And I think the reality is that sometimes we do need to compromise some, and we have to be better than Pelosi and McConnell, doing nothing while the status quo is death with zero accountability. The police union contracts currently allow files to be purged while trigger-happy PPD is slaying wrong Black and Brown suspects left and right. A fraction of solvency is better than zero solvency, provided that that fraction does no additional harm. And I believe that the draft, as was presented for today, does no additional harm. And more importantly, to a lot of the people that will be speaking against this, Councilmember Garcia is consistently champion for this community. He voted to defund the police. He's the only member of local government who has spoken out against the unfair unconstitutional arrests of the Phoenix police protesters. Drop the charges, all the charges. I don't know about everybody else, but when somebody is consistently stands for what is right in action, not just in words, I have to trust that somebody and trust their character. And District 8 has asked its support in getting this measure passed today, so I urge all my sisters and brothers to work together as council who are on both sides of the aisle, have, and all give their own favorite support.
Thank you. Teri Becker will be followed by Hannah Heyman.
Good afternoon, city council members, Mayor Gallego. My name is Teri Becker, and I wish to express my support in adopting the ordinance as presented today, adding a new chapter 20 in the Phoenix City Code to establish the Office of Accountability and Transparency, specifically Article 2, Section 20-5, Item D, which states, "Neither the director nor employees of the OAT's office nor their immediate family members shall have formerly been employees of any law enforcement agency. It is imperative that the director of this office be a civilian, one without any bias for or against the department, and one who can approach this necessary work with an independent, fair, and rational investigative eye. The whole purpose of creating the OAT was for our Phoenix Police Department to respectfully partner with representatives of the communities they serve. I believe this work cannot be fully achieved if the director is selected from a pool of candidates with any law enforcement background. Doing so will defeat the purpose of the OAT, as public needs to have confidence hearing from a fellow citizen, one of our own, one who can competently interrogate and impartially review..." impartially review department complaints, one who will ensure corrective action is taken when necessary while collaborating with the department to reinforce a mutual trust that is currently broken between Phoenix Police and Phoenix citizens. Alternatively, if findings are delivered by anyone with ties to law enforcement, they will be received as redundant and will not satisfy the public's demand for justice. I want to thank you all for voting for the creation of the OAT, but let's not waste taxpayers' resources by establishing that its leadership can include more opinions from law enforcement, resulting in lost faith in the office's effectiveness before its work can even begin. I encourage you to use your leadership today to guarantee that the OAT Director and staff be qualified, inclusive, and well-respected civilians of this community. Thank you."
Thank you. Hannah will be next, followed by Ben Lewis.
Why are any of you here? Are you really also committed to your incompetence, to furthering white supremacy and terror? We know that's why Sal's here, but the rest of you line up to do the police union's bidding right alongside him. The rest of you are just more polited by your treachery. The community has very clearly demanded an OAT that is independent, investigative, and transparent, and created through a true community process. You've shown us time and time again that you are all under the boot of the cop union and incapable of making your own decisions. This is no community process. How many people in this city don't have phones or internet access due to your violent policies to participate in these jokes you call meetings? And we have journalistic evidence that the cops monitor the community members here, making public comments to add to terrorist watch lists so they can target us in our homes and on the streets for false felony charges. Hi, Actic, you all knowingly participate in this violence. And for what? Some cop union money when election time rolls around? Pathetic. It becomes ever more painfully obvious that none of you have any control over the city. This city is under the control of the most violent cops in the nation, the vicious mob known as Phoenix Police. In recent weeks, Phoenix Police have stood shoulder to shoulder with the violent white supremacists in an ongoing attempt to subvert the election. And still you trust them to monitor themselves with this joke you're calling an Office of Accountability and Transparency. We know these anti-black, white supremacist cops will protect their own every time. Are you all really so scared of Chokehold Jerry? Is she the one really in charge here? Every one of you are more concerned about pleasing the white supremacist rot in our city and actually taking the time to listen to the people that you're brutalizing with your anti-black policies. We oppose this draft of OAT that is not independent, that is not investigative, and that is not transparent, and that was written in secret by the city manager and their cop buddies. Vote no on this disgrace and work with Black, Indigenous, and Brown community leaders to create an office that will truly hold the murderous Phoenix Police accountable.
Ben will be next, followed by Ann Hart.
Hi, everybody. This is Ben Lewis. I appreciate you taking the time to hear what we all have to say. I am here to speak against this proposal. I'm speaking against this proposal because for the past number of years, we've had the Phoenix PD killing our neighbors in the streets, and that keeps them from having the opportunity to have the justice that they're promised, fair access to the system. And the problem we have because of this is a trust issue. And what I think me and many of the people who are here today are saying is that we don't trust the system that's being put forward today. And we don't trust the system because it is too tied to law enforcement. It is not an independent system that the community controls. It is a system that the government can use to abuscape justice for the community against these murderous police. So I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. I don't need the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hart, followed by Marcus Reed.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and City Councilmembers. As a former member of CPTI, I'm coming before you to speak to Item 27, the Office of Accountability and Transparency, in which I am in favor of. A culture of accountability is important in law enforcement. A system of internal checks and balances is necessary to make sure police officers carry out their duties properly and act with integrity. The adoption of this ordinance to establish the Office of Accountability and Transparency will help to build trust between the police and the community. When the public sees the law enforcement has systems in place to enforce police accountability, police are more likely seen as legitimate and will be more willing to assist the police, the police and the community. The President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing says that people are more likely to obey the law when they believe that those who are enforcing it have a legitimate authority to tell them what to do. The public supports legitimacy only on those they believe are acting in procedurally just ways. Accountability and law enforcement begins with fostering a department culture that values integrity and ethics. And for these reasons, I urge you, Mayor Gallego and City Councilmembers, to approve this ordinance for the creation of the Office of Accountability and Transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus will be next, followed by Dana Reed.
Hi there. Just wanted to make sure you guys can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So I'm definitely on board with the creation of the Office of Accountability and Transparency. What I was hoping, though, that it was more community-focused. And, you know, it could be, and actually, the investigations could actually be started by the office itself. So if those are there, then I'm definitely for that. If not, I would, you know, implore you guys to make sure that those two options were in there. And the reason why that is, is maybe I'm just asking for, you know, a little bit of grace, you know, especially you, Mayor Kate, you know, just really thinking of the fact that there is a police officer on this force that was willing to put an incredible threat on your life, and you are a, you are a privileged white woman. And so, if you could only imagine what life is like for the rest of the citizens that do not share your color or your privilege. So I'm, you know, really hoping that the Office of Accountability can decide what investigations they want to go, and we aren't crippling that. And if that is in there, then I am on board. If not, I'm hoping that my councilwoman, Mayor Pastore, and yourself, Mayor, and the rest of the council does vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana will be next, followed by Jeremy Helga.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you for your time. I'm against the civilian oversight that doesn't include independent investigations and community participation. Something is not better than nothing, and we need actual change and transparency and accountability, not more of the same nonsense that we're all used to. It's all smoke and mirrors, and I strongly oppose to continuing the status quo while pretending to take action, all while protecting the police and white supremacy. I yield my time.
Thank you. Jeremy will be next, followed by Vanessa DeCarlo. Jeremy, the floor is yours.
Mayor?
Okay, I am unable to hear Jerem-- yeah, okay.
Yes, it appears we are not able to hear Jeremy. He may be having issues with his phone.
Okay. We will go to Vanessa, followed by Paris Moore. Followed by Paris Moore.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, Jeremy, we can hear you. Wonderful. Thank you. There was some--
Okay.
Jeremy, the floor is yours.
Mayor Gallego, members of the council. Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the time and apologize if any of the technicalities were on my end. I'm here before you this afternoon, yet again, many times in a long string in my service to the city as a member of the Human Relations Commission, on the CPTI Task Force, on the Use of Force Board and Discipline Review Board for the Phoenix Police Department, as well as a member of the Chiefs Advisory Boards and so on, to urge you to please support this vote today, but not to stop here. When CPTI made its recommendations five years ago, we recommended a process to explore civilian leadership, a model that would best suit this city for new civilian oversight department. Instead, what happened was city staff took this upon themselves and kept the community out of much of the discussion. I want to thank the leaders on this council who did involve and help lead this, particularly you, Councilwoman Garcia. And I want to thank you, Mayor, as well for your ongoing support, as well as several other colleagues. But the fact of the matter remains that while this is an important step and one that needs to be taken today, it needs to be refined and further reviewed and further expanded with the additional civilian citizen input that's being called for. And I want to note to those who may not realize that there are state statutes, federal laws, union contracts that do place limitations on some of what the city can do in deploying this model. It doesn't mean that those existing limitations need to stop us from making efforts at either working through and pass them, or in having those limits changed, even if lobbying the state level, and even if it means changing the way we go through our public safety contract. I thank you all. I urge you all to vote yes today, and I appreciate your time. Do you have any questions, if there are any?
Thank you, Jeremy. Not seeing any questions. We will go to Dana Reed. Thank you, Dana, for your patience, and then Vanessa DeCarlo.
Mayor, Dana Reed has already spoken, therefore we can go with Vanessa, if we may.
One, thank you for your help. Vanessa will be next. I'm sorry, you're right. So it was Vanessa and then Paris. Apologies.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. The community has been demanding an independent investigative OAT the entire time, and even beyond when OAT was being discussed, all the way dating back to 2010, 2015. All the measures that have been put forth have not been successful, and the missing ingredient, when we look at something like a fit gap analysis, would be the community. And not only community input, but actually community implementation, which would look through an investigative and independent and investigative lens. It is a critical component. We've seen other investigative and CRBs around the country that have reformed even since putting forth these measures. And there is so much more information that needs to be considered and understanding that other CRBs that have failed have one thing in common, which is lacking this independent and investigative component that is critical. This is not a community-oriented process, and it is not accountable or transparent without that independent process. We demand that you vote no until you have implemented a real community-oriented process and you have guaranteed an independent investigative OAT with real power to hold violent Phoenix Police accountable. This is a matter of life or death. This is not something that should be, you should phone in, anybody on this council. I beg you to look at something that actually will hold people accountable and is truly transparent. I yield my time to somebody else.
Thank you. Thank you. We will have Paris Moore, followed by Patricia.
Mayor, it appears that Paris is not on the line.
Thank you. Is Patricia with us?
I'm here, Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please go ahead. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Patricia Peluca, an organizer with Mass Liberation Arizona. Thank you so much, community, for taking time to be here today to oppose this harmful extension of Phoenix Police Department. And public servants, in February, you all voted yes for a community-driven oversight of the nation's most violent police force. It is necessary that an Office of Accountability and Transparency have independent investigative powers, and we all know that that is not happening with OAT as this ordinance is written. Today really is a sad day. The community has been demanding that the council offer protection from the violent killing machine that is Phoenix Police Department. I assume, as past experience informs us, that Council and Mayor will continue to ignore the needs of the community yet again today. All we can do now is take note that the fact that none of you are willing to support the community demands and therefore do not deserve your seats. Those saying that this office is better than nothing are absolutely incorrect. Creating a public-facing OAT that is really nothing more than a rubber stamp for Phoenix Police Department's investigations makes Council and Mayor look progressive and in support of dire community issues while doing absolutely nothing to decrease harm for the people directly impacted by the grave incessant violence of Phoenix Police. I implore you all to vote like Black Lives Matter today and to vote no on this weak, pointless OAT that was built without community input and does nothing to create an independent office to oversee Phoenix Police. It makes me sick that people are on here asking the community to trust the police. What horrific gaslighting. Trust the people that are killing you. That's sick. I implore you to vote like Black Lives Matter, Council and Mayor. Vote no.
Leah Terry will be next, followed by Ann Ender. Leah, the floor is yours.
Mayor, it appears that we cannot hear Leah.
All right. Let's try Ann Ender.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, you guys had me muted. But yes, so my name is Leah Terry, and I'm urging you to vote no on this agenda item today. As everyone else has spoken previously, I'm against civilian oversight that doesn't include independent investigations and community participation. Again, like everyone said, something is not better than nothing when our lives are on the line. Thank you.
Ann Ender will be next, followed by Elizabeth Venable.
Good afternoon. Mayor Gallego, councilmembers. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can loudly and clearly.
Okay, sorry. My name's Ann Ender, and I'm the president of Operation Blue Ribbon, and I am a civilian. Thank you for the opportunity to reiterate for the third time my opposition to establish the Office of Accountability and Transparency. I'm still not understanding why the taxpayers of this city, a city that many of us were born and raised in, are burdened with funding an entity that already exists purely for the reason of a few councilmembers and their activist followers not agreeing with the outcomes and the board appointees. It's implicit and it's unnecessary. I'm also not understanding, after all I've heard today, why we're trying to push something through that apparently no one really is in support of. So in my last comments, I'd like to also say it appears that there's no real consensus amongst the mayor and the council on what OAT is supposed to do and accomplish. What current measurements and logic have been used to create and articulate expected results? What are the expected results? This ordinance only speaks to vague and subjective actions. For over the last four years, I've spent countless hours per week volunteering, that's with no pay, to make city a better city, to make it a place we're all proud of. I respectfully ask all of you to do the same and deny adoption of this ordinance. Thank you.
Elizabeth Venable is next, followed by Arminie Jackson.
Hi. Sorry for the audio quality. I wanted to share a sentiment from my friend, Michael Felder, who's sitting with me, and he said, "No one should be in fear of an officer." And he noted that they-- And he noted that they like to even the score, and they don't have common sense when they're interacting with people. And I think that I would also agree with all of those things. I wanted to say that Councilwoman Pastore's addition is very interesting, and I don't know if it will come across or be voted on, but I do think that no police should ever be on the Office of Accountability and Transparency. And if you're going to do that, you might as well have the other side as well. I think that you need to have it be independent investigative and accountable to the community. I think that you need to ensure that there is a CRB which is strong and has the interest of victims in its mind, as well as the participation of the community and victims as well. So that would be the major points that I would like to make on neutral, because I believe that there have been important moments in the process of this, but I feel that it is not enough to satisfy community demands. Thank you.
Thank you. Armani Jackson will be followed by Will Knight.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can.
So my name, it's actually pronounced Armani. So my name's Armani D. Jackson. I am an activist here in Phoenix, Arizona. I do believe that it's imperative that the voices of the community are heard and that, you know, we are the overseers. We're the ones that are affected, and to, you know, have police involved in this, the Office of Accountability and Transparency, we're not going to get the transparency nor the accountability that we need as a community in order to move forward. And one of the things that I say all the time is that transparency is key in progression. There's not going to be any progression if there's no transparency, and I do not believe there's going to be any transparency unless it is completely in the hands of the community.
Thank you. Armani next will be Will Knight, followed by Ben Loughlin.
Thank you so much, council mayors. My name is Will Knight. I'm an attorney. I'm a criminal justice policy consultant, and I'm a directly impacted Latino immigrant. I'm here opposing the OAT model on the agenda because Section 20-1 says specifically that the OAT shall monitor or participate in some investigations, and that careful language is contrary to the policy that this council adopted in February. This city has explored civilian review for decades, comprised ad hoc committees, and met countless times to empower the public with independent investigative authority over the police department. And this careful language undermines that entire effort. On February 25th, this council specifically adopted a model. It rejected a model that only permitted monitoring and auditing of investigations and adopted the OAT model that gave authority to independently investigate law enforcement. That express directive is why Mayor Gallego, you expressed concerns on September 8th, that the draft of the OAT proposal didn't give the director enough discretion to pick investigations of greatest priority, essentially that the OAT did not have independent investigative authority. So that's why I oppose the current OAT proposal, because we somehow went from adopting a model with the express purpose of returning investigative authority to the people, but the end result is a proposal that even in Section 20-6, the mandatory oversight by OAT clause, only empowers OAT to, quote, "monitor or participate in investigations." There is no other profession that enjoys the privilege of unfettered self-investigation and regulation like law enforcement. That's why the people no longer trust law enforcement. There's also a reason that the President of the United States, the Commander in Chief of our military, is a civilian, because government police power must be subordinate to the civil power. If you want to salvage the rule of law and restore trust in our government, you must implement the OAT as you intended when you adopted the model in February, with independent authority subordinating law enforcement to the civil power of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben will be next, followed by Carol Coles Henry.
Hi, my name is Ben Loughlin. I'm a resident of District 4 and policy coordinator for Full Day in Action. I'm here today in opposition to civilian oversight that does not include independent investigative authority. Coming to y'all and pushing for a no vote on this ordinance was definitely not a choice we made lightly. We've been working with some of y'all on this for 15 months, and being in this position now really sucks. There are some aspects of this ordinance that would lead to greater transparency for the police department, for sure. But let's be super clear that greater transparency is not the same thing as ending the violence. Monitoring the police department's investigation is not the same thing as independent investigations. Enforcing the families of those killed by Phoenix Police or those who have been violated by Phoenix Police to go through the same damn process when just another, with just like another person witnessing it, is not a less traumatic or humanizing experience, uh, process. Twenty-nine people have been shot, and at least 17 people have died at the hands of the Phoenix Police since we started this process 15 months ago. This ordinance doesn't get us closer to changing that. Telling us to be patient and accept these incremental steps, that things will have to change in time, isn't acceptable. If this ordinance passes, we're running a huge risk of doing nothing but legitimizing the current police department investigative process, meaning we're going to be in the same place, having the same damn conversations for years to come, while dozens more people are killed by Phoenix Police, and y'all are ticturing around the fundamental changes that actually need to happen. Also, Councilwoman Pastore and Councilwoman Gordato, that motion you made to include former law enforcement outside of Arizona makes this policy even worse. I'm not sure where that came from, but it kind of sounds like a last-minute ask from the police union. Please vote no on this ordinance until independent investigations are included. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Coles Henry will be followed by Anisia Groves.
Hi. Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego, Vice Mayor and council members. I thank you for your steadfast commitment to bringing this OAT ordinance forward for this policy session. I'd also like to commend City Managers Zirker, Milton DeHoney, and Chief Williams for their support in embracing the Community Police Trust Initiative's 2015 recommendation to explore the creation of a citizens' review board for the Phoenix Police Department. For many of us, this ordinance is decades in the making. Many of us endured the struggles of getting city council approval for the city's anti-discrimination ordinance, fair housing ordinance, minority and women's small business ordinance, and now this, and other critical human and civil rights laws. This Office of Accountability and Transparency ordinance, in my opinion, is the next best step that the fifth-largest city in the country can take as a unified body and as leaders today. Progressively-minded, forward-thinking city members and leaders who have the opportunity, excuse me, to be about the rights for all people, and you have that in your offices. Approval of the Model B, as approved by you, was the first step. The approval of the budget was the second step. The third step in this process is approving this ordinance. Congressman John Lewis said in his final letter to America, he said that "you," meaning all of us, "have a chance to make a difference in society." This is your moment, Mayor and council. This is our collective moment. It is time now for Phoenix to have such an ordinance, the OAT ordinance, and I implore you and encourage you today to unanimously support the creation and enaction of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Groves will be followed by Beth Ellison.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. First, I want to remind everyone that it's obvious this entire process is the opposite of transparent, and that is no doubt purposeful. To begin with, these meetings are inaccessible. The only reason I can be here and sit through hours of this nonsense is that I am a full-time student with a flexible schedule. What about everyone who doesn't have that privilege? It is unacceptable that this process excludes people, especially those who would have to go to great lengths to rearrange their life just to be able to speak up, to speak up about the state-sponsored murder of Black, Brown, Indigenous, queer, and poor people. Are we still really allowing an issue of that magnitude to be casually discussed on Wednesday afternoon alongside a long list of liquor licenses and minor administrative matters? While people are at work, making it impossible for people to show up and participate in a process that could mean the difference between life and death for them and their loved ones? Hopefully, you didn't forget that this is what OAT was supposed to be about, saving lives and reducing harm while we work toward police imprisonment abolition. Quite beyond making public comment and participation accessible, the community needs to drive the development of this office, as was promised. Directly impacted people must not only have a seat at the table, but must lead this initiative, or this process is not only worthless, it actually escalates the harm done to our communities. OAT also needs independent investigative power. Otherwise, it would be beholden to the whims of Phoenix PD, which is the very problem that the office is supposed to address. This is wildly inappropriate. In what universe does it make sense to have people investigate themselves when they kill human beings? There are also major gaps in this ordinance that make it impossible for community to trust. For example, regarding reporting, it needs to include information on discipline and early intervention system monitoring. Also, if OAT tracks people who filed multiple complaints, they're going to be discouraged from pursuing investigation due to the very real threat of retaliation and surveillance. We know that Phoenix PD already works with the Arizona Counterterrorism Information Center to surveil and harass activists and even victims. If you pass this ordinance, that kind of abuse and power will only be allowed to spread further and harm more people. Vote no.
Beth Ellison is next, followed by Stanley Bates.
Good afternoon, council members and Mayor Gallego. I'm a resident of Phoenix, and I'm speaking today in support of the motion to establish OAT, in particular, the stipulation barring participation by current or former law enforcement. On both the individual and group level, we cannot solve a problem with the same thinking that created it. I used to work in risk management and compliance in healthcare. And when an incident occurred, we had our internal investigation, but we had also to respond to our funding source. They would ask us to submit the findings of our investigation, but they would go in and do their own investigation. And the reason that's important is because there was a conflict of interest, and of course, none of our, none of the members of our organization would ever go and participate in the external investigation. But I feel like that's what's starting to happen here. An external investigation, independent of the Phoenix PD, allows for highly skilled and respected leaders within our own communities to bring a greater diversity of perspectives to the analysis. IAD already provides ample opportunity for LEO perspectives. Having law enforcement involved in the OAT sets up a conflict of interest from the start, not to mention redundancy. IAD already has law enforcement oversight. The entire purpose of the OAT was to offer an analysis free from any law enforcement influence. Internal investigations can already be prone to groupthink, no matter how well-intentioned they are. Groupthink is the phenomenon that led to the explosion of the Space Shuttle Challenger in 1986. We've known since then the importance of a wide variety of perspectives and accountability. It's more relevant than ever with life and death consequences. A civilian oversight operation without civilian oversight is not a civilian oversight operation. Thank you for your time.
Stanley Bates is next, followed by Robert Nichols.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Stanley Bates, and I live at 4243 West Ironwood Drive in Phoenix. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on Item 27. I'm here today because I have serious concerns about the adoption of an ordinance adding a new Chapter 20 to the Phoenix City Code establishing the Office of Accountability and Transparency. In submitting and writing a form of petition, I'd like to read the petition out loud into the record now. To the Mayor and Council of the City of Phoenix, Arizona, whereas the sworn officers of the Phoenix Police Department put their lives on the line daily to protect the safety of all city residents, whereas the overwhelming majority of Phoenix Police Department personnel are dedicated professionals who are committed to the fair, equitable, and just treatment of all citizens, whereas while police misconduct should never be tolerated, there are already two independent oversight bodies in place, specifically the Civil Service Board and the Disciplinary Review Board, to immediately and comprehensively investigate alleged wrongdoing, and if the facts warrant, take swift disciplinary action against the responsible officers. Whereas the proposed ordinance G-6770, an ordinance establishing the governing language for Office of Accountability and Transparency by creating the new Chapter 20 of the Phoenix City Code and establish an effective date creates a redundant and unnecessary bureaucratic bureaucracy that will cost at least $3 million annually in taxpayers' money. Whereas the $3 million taxpayer dollars that are the proposed Office of Accountability and Transparency will consume should instead be invested directly in our communities, not used for adding more bureaucrats and lawyers to the city payroll. Whereas the proposed ordinance G-6770 will only introduce waste and inefficiency while doing nothing to legally improve police standards and accountability, whereas the proposed ordinance G-6770 is a dangerous concession to the radical ideology.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll go to Robert Nichols, followed by Jess Bristow.
Oh. Mayor, I have a question for that gentleman. Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio.
Mayor. I just have a question for the gentleman.
Councilman DeCecio.
Yeah, he's reading a petition that's going to require us to vote on this and send it to the public. I'd like, from my end, I'd like to hear what else he has to say. Could you please continue, sir?
Councilman, we would, we have a procedure for council petitions where they go to subcommittee? We have, we do not, we cannot vote on citizen petition.
I just need to make sure that if he doesn't read it completely, I want to ask the city attorney, if he does not read it completely, is it still acceptable to move to, to subcommittee or to the council? To, and I'd like to ask Chris Meyer, Mayor.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the petition has to be submitted in writing and be signed by the individual, and it has to be done at a council meeting. With the virtual meetings that we've been having, we have allowed the petition to be sent to us and for them to announce it. It is not necessary that it be read into the record at the meeting in order to present the petition.
Oh, okay. So he can just basically send it directly to you, or who should he send it to, Mayor? Or to, I should ask you that.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, it should be sent to the city clerk.
Okay. And so he doesn't have to finish reading it then, I guess, and then he could just submit it that way, as long as he has a signature on it, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it gets filed, because by law, he's allowed to do that, and it requires a public vote of the council.
Mayor, council-
And that public vote-
And Mayor, Councilmember DeCecio, that is, that they're supposed to appear in person and present the petition, but with the virtual meetings, we've modified that procedure to accommodate them, to allow them to submit the petitions in this manner, as I described.
Okay. And then, then what is the rule, then? We have to hear it within 15 days, correct?
The council must take action, but there are a variety of actions the council could take.
Within 15 days, correct?
Mayor, that's correct. The council has to take some action in the regular course of business within 15 days.
Okay. And then finally, too, just to make sure, he's got a form of the petition that needs to be changed and modified, as long as it's agendized, there can be some changes to that,
Councilman DeCecio, if I understand correctly, you're asking if that petition then gets agendized and it appears on an agenda, can there be changes made to it? The council has an opportunity to consider that, and yes, it's not like an initiative or referendum where it would be put on and the council can't change it. So the council would have the ability to modify that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I'm just trying to get this all on the record, and because I'm going to be asking the mayor a little later on, if these two motions fail, to allow us to send this to the ballot, and that form of the petition allows us to do that, especially if it allows us to either reject it, accept it, or modify it. that, especially if it allows us to either reject it, accept it, or modify it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. We know you are not in favor of this policy. Robert Nichols is next, followed by Jess Bristow.
As you've heard today, the proposal does not conform to the OAT model as adopted by this council in February. I am in full support of real, independent civilian oversight of law enforcement, and for that reason, I respectfully ask the council members to oppose the motion and adopt amendments or a new motion to match the original intent of the OAT. I encourage the council members to expand and improve this inadequate proposal by consulting community leaders, empowering the office to initiate independent investigations into police misconduct and to avoid a clear conflict of interest that would arise if law enforcement of any kind from any state were to have any part in controlling or guiding the office. As you've heard from the overwhelming majority of speakers today, the proposed office does not meet the needs or demands of our community. Phoenix desperately needs an independent investigative citizen review board designed by the communities who demanded this change to protect our people, not a hollowed-out facade designed in secret to provide the veneer of accountability to a historically violent and racist institution. Mayor, council members, you can and you must do better. I yield my time.
We go to Jess Bristow, followed by Christopher Martinez.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can hear you.
Okay, I am against civilian oversight that does not include independent investigation and community participation. It's just baffling that we have to be here in the first place, but I am not surprised that the City of Phoenix is trying to adopt something that doesn't include community participation outside of the Police Department. You know, we can't have police investigating police. That does not go anywhere. That is really why we're even here in the first place, is because there is no accountability for the Police Department. And so I strongly urge all the council people to oppose the current version of this investigative process because it does not include civilian oversight and independent and community participation. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Christopher Martinez is followed by Jennifer Redd.
As far as I can see, an agreement was made on civilian oversight that included independent investigations and community input. But now, in an extreme act of cowardice, you're attempting to break that agreement. So, and the way that you've chosen to shove this agenda item 27 down our throats really feels like an act of complete contempt for the people of this city you're supposed to be serving. We had an agreement. We should be moving forward with this agreement. Instead, you've taken us back and we're rehashing and rehashing. But agreement was made, and you're breaking the agreement. Now, since the police chief would still have the sole authority to fire or keep bad cops, whether independent investigations were kept or not, it appears to me that this action is all about keeping as much information about illicit police activity away from the public as possible. And we all know information is power. So what is this about? Is this just about power? Is this about keeping things from the public? You cannot have a functioning democracy without transparency. You cannot stand for human rights, civil rights. You cannot be upstanding, have integrity without transparency. It is impossible to have that when you have an empowering balance. So if this is about power, then we need to be honest and address that this is about power. Now, I'm asking everybody to please oppose these changes. I'm asking you to consider that, at this point, with how long this process has been going on, that maybe we need to just to move on and allow the public to have the responsibility of this, of having independent investigation. Thank you.
Jennifer Redd will be followed by Xenia Oronia.
Hello, council members and Mayor Gallego. My name is Jennifer Redd, and I want to offer my support for the ordinance and creation of the Office of Accountability and Transparency, but with the understanding that there's an opportunity for future amendments. I understand that the current police union contract doesn't allow for non-police investigators to question officers' actions during an administrative investigation. Hence, this leaves the OAT's role to monitoring or participating in internal investigations. To achieve meaningful reform and trust in this newly created office, the OAT should have the power to conduct its own independent investigations led by civilians. And so I ask, on July 1st, 2021, when the Phoenix Police Union contract expires, Phoenix City Council and the mayor commits to achieving meaningful reform and community trust by requiring that the Phoenix Police Union contract honor and accept the Office of Accountability and Transparency's role in conducting their own independent investigations. It is only then that this office will serve, represent, and build trust in its mission of providing an independent review of the Phoenix Police Department. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Xenia is next, followed by Vidi Hernandez.
Mayor, it appears that the caller may have some audio.
All right. Then we will go to Ms. Hernandez, followed by Kenneth Smith.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. This is Vidi Hernandez with Polite Action. I mean, again, today, as Ben mentioned, not, something that was not a light decision, to come and ask you all to vote no on the civilian oversight because it continues to exclude independent investigations. When y'all passed this in February, there was an understanding that community would be part of drafting this language. It was a motion made by Councilmember Pastor, yet here we are nine months later, community members and family members who have the most expertise of what the investigative process is, have been actively excluded from this process. Y'all made a commitment, then, to create systems of transparency and accountability, and that this was going to be one of those first steps. However, this current policy does not do that, by refusing to do the number-one priority for families and community members to include independent investigations. Under this policy, nothing changes in investigative process, except that there can be someone else watching it. But PSB is still the one solely responsible for starting those investigations and investigating themselves. PSB is being positioned as the only investigative body, something that is not mandated by charter, and it is not mandated by state law. It is a sentence that needs to be removed from the MOU in the upcoming months that you all can commit to doing by passing a board with investigative power and then making that change in the MOU. If your child or someone you cared for was killed by police or harmed, let's not even say police, let's say harmed by anyone, would you feel comfortable and safe with his friends or her friends or the person that harmed them, being the only ones that get to investigate that process? That is a question that mothers and sisters continue to ask, that if this was your child, that this was someone you loved, that you would not be okay with the investigations being done by their homies and their friends. You have the power to fundamentally restructure this process that has been traumatizing for families. This policy can include independent investigations. It can include a family advocate. It can refuse police to be part of this process. You just have to have the courage to do that. And so just asking for that to be the case, and just to wrap up, specifically asking you, Michael Nowakowski, who's my representative, who are responsible for a lot of this as the chair of the Public Subcommittee, to please listen to the mothers that y'all have been hearing for months, and go back to the drawing board, all of you, and bring back a policy that is actually needed, not just to be transparent, but to actually end the killing of people in your district.
Kenneth Smith is next, followed by Sean Severus.
Hello, council. This is Kenneth Smith, a member and one of the leaders of the Unity Collective in Arizona that comprises of a number of community Black organizers and people of color, along with a number of social services organizations in Arizona. I come to you with a heavy heart because we do have an issue with a proper investigative oversight. However, I come to you as a proponent of the Office of Accountability and Transparency to be able to set this up with amendments optional. We need to make sure we have the opportunity to come back and amend as necessary. My understanding of the Office of Accountability and Transparency is that there is a director that will be there to make sure that it's set up as civilian, to make sure that it's set up the appropriate way. We agree that it needs to have civilian oversight only, not law enforcement. We agree that it needs to be set up and have independent investigations, and we agree that it can be amended to do so with time. But by throwing the baby out with the bathwater, we'll get nothing done. Perfect cannot be the enemy of progress. We have to work to progress in a place and a space together. Yes, it is not proposed exactly the way it needs to be, but we need to get it on the books and work with it as an ordinance so we can do what we can for our community and serve our community appropriately. The Unity Collective, as an organization of over 32 more Black and Brown organizations, as well as organizations in the community of Phoenix, Arizona, believe and are a proponent of this issue, and we immediately ask for the fourth whip to be put in to vote, as well as pass what's best for the community, and it's with heavy heart because a lot of our people with us do not understand that or don't want to go with that, but we believe at this moment, it is time for us to get it on the books, get a director in the seat, get the right folks in the seat, and get it worked out for the best part of our community. So we are a proponent of this as we move forward, and I ask people not to be against perfection. Perfection cannot be the enemy of progress. We need to not work for perfection, but we have to work for continuous progression in the area of perfection to serve our community. And with that, I have my time.
Thank you so much. We will go to Sean, and then we are going to try Xenia one more time.
Mayor and the members of council, good afternoon. This community needs an Office of Accountability and Transparency, but this is not the OAT that the community has asked for and fought for for years and years. You know, in life, I find it's always helpful anytime you're going to make a big decision to take a step back and really think things through. So let's do that now and ask ourselves, is this what the community has asked for? Is it independent? Is it investigative? Is it community-driven? Is it transparent? You know, I mean, to the other caller's points, I don't think you can even say in the drafting process of this that really any of the community-driven or transparent pieces have taken place. So I think that's a very clear indication of if we put this in as-is, what's likely to happen? And then, last minute, Councilwoman Pastor's proposed amendment allowing law enforcement fire law enforcement officers into the office. I mean, just think about that. Think about how many years people have been fighting for this and to have that put in last minute. And then, of course, DeCecio is prohibiting any attorney who's participated in a lawsuit against the city, which is a complete non sequitur. It doesn't make any sense. This is a huge decision that you will make today that will affect the lives of community members for decades and decades. This draft is not it. We need to take a step back, bring the community into the process. This draft has had its teeth filed down and filed down. If we need to have a conversation on what steps it would take to get to where the community is asking for, let's have that public conversation. We need to take our time and be deliberate with such an important and life-altering decision for the people of Phoenix. As I've said, in these meetings now for years and years, if this has no teeth, it's all for naught. Thank you.
Paris Wallace will be next, followed by Daylen Rogers.
Hi, this is Paris. I am the Director of Black Phoenix Organizing Collective, and I am a resident of District Four. Council, Mayor Gallego, when we passed civilian oversight in February, the community backed it because of the organizing and the promise of independent investigations, community participation inside of this policy. And now, this council went behind closed doors and wrote a policy that makes it okay to re-traumatize the survivors, and they did it without community input, and on top of that, blocked OAT from true independent investigations. Now, are we all confused? So are we, right? Writing the policy behind closed doors shows us that the city never had any intention of increasing police transparency or accountability. We originally backed it. Now, knowing where the loyalties lie and knowing that they are willing to spend $3 million on something that is harmful and meaningless, we cannot afford to settle. Cops are still investigating cops, and families and victims of police misconduct are still forced to go through the same horrific process, now with the whole random person watching. No, no, something is not better than nothing. When our lives are on the line, Black and Brown people are still being targeted, harassed, and killed by Phoenix Police Department, and our community leaders are facing felony charges because of the anti-Black, white supremacist Phoenix Police Department, and they're being protected by this council. Cutting our voices out of this process shows you never, ever cared about our health and safety. You only cared about your image. So I'm going to say this one more time. Vote no and take your police union money and leave us to govern the city. We don't need this. I yield my time.
Thank you, and I think we have Xenia now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Cool. My name is Xenia Orona. I was raised in Maryvale in a predominantly Mexican community. I'm the Executive Director of Fuerte. I oppose Item 27 as it is written. Our families and friends have been victims under the disproportionate threat of police brutality. It has cost us our lives and our livelihoods. Being targeted negatively impacts our quality of life. It traumatizes generations of our Black and Latino community members. We've worked hard to implement independent oversight and accountability, and the policy for the Office of Accountability and Transparency, as it is currently written, would not stop the rash of police brutality by Phoenix PD. Civilian oversight policy written without the input of civilian community and that allows the police, police itself, is repeating a failed experiment and would be no more than a procedural sweetener as an answer to the bitter reality that we have been denouncing for far too long. We ask for OAT to have the power of independent investigation on police. As it is now, OAT can only monitor and participate, and would allow former law enforcement agents of staff. The call for an independent investigation stems from the need for transparency and complete impartiality. It is public knowledge that police have a long history of protecting their own to avoid accountability. OAT needs to be all civilian-led to preserve its accountability. We ask that friends and families of victims of police violence participate in writing this policy. We have pushed for civilian community oversight for years. I was in the church during your listening session, and the mayor promised solutions. I witnessed the pain of families who lost their sons, their loved ones, to uniform Phoenix PD. Without community inclusion and independent investigation, in writing this final version, the solution has been sidestepped for smoke and mirrors. Civilian oversight with independent investigation is a much-needed entity in our justice system. The policy as it is written today does not possibly satisfy or offer protection for our friends and families of color. I urge the council to vote down the motion on the floor. Move to table the adoption for a future meeting after the ordinance is rewritten to reinstate the independent investigation policy. It is unacceptable that the civilian oversight board has led a wolf in the hem's house. Until this board is independent of police influence, it will not be good enough.
Thank you. Daylen is next, followed by Ms. Dianda.
My name is Daylen Rogers. I wanted to really just address the council and the mayor, as well as, you know, I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak today. As far as the OAT, as it's currently written, the model it's currently written, we do oppose. However, we do not oppose the idea of OAT the way that was originally, you know, proposed. So we want an OAT that is conceived by a meaningful community process, not a pro-police, anti-OAT city manager's office that would deceptively lead the OAT, making its director, as stated in this ordinance, serve at his pleasure. That is such sinister language. Next, if passed, I believe the community will find legal challenge... Next, if passed, I believe the community will find legal challenges. And I really want for you to pay attention to this. We will find legal challenges around the words deliberative privilege language, such as recommend and advise is used in, together with that in order to make confidential any sort of information that could be provided to the community. Also, it was decided in the U.S. District Court to not allow deliberative privilege to apply to civil rights issues involving police. Neither it's applicable, neither is it applicable when police are doing criminal misconduct. So that language right there is going to cause a large legal issue, and I just want to put that out in the forefront before you make this vote. This language is irrelevant in regards to the purpose of OAT that it will serve, which were primarily, which were primarily sparked by the interact, I mean, by the interest in the public of civil rights issues against black people perpetrated by police, making that irrelevant. I motion, or I ask that you motion on behalf of our public comment that all those, and all those who lost their lives in Phoenix due police violence, that this is a no vote today, and that the members of council and the mayor motion for the prerequisite to a formal OAT vote should forever be the involvement of the communities most negatively impacted by police and largely led by civil rights. And also, the comprehensive measure to really erode these police protections that are really the true reasons why you're stopping us from having independent investigations as set by the plea MOU.
Thank you. We will go to Ms. DeAnda, followed by Bailey Spears. Mayor, it appears that DeAnda is not on the line. All right, we will go to Bailey Spears, followed by Kelly Quack.
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Gallego, council members, and the public for allowing me to speak today. I'm a civilian here to support the oath, but I also ask city council and city staff to allow for amendments to expand on the ordinance in the future. In particular, while the ordinance allows the oath to monitor and participate in internal investigations, it lacks language on independent investigative authority. I urge the city to amend the ordinance moving forward to allow for independent investigations that will ensure the oath is truly community-driven and accountable. I also implore the city to enhance the ordinance in the area of civilian input. The proposal as we're in today focuses on a top-down approach. I believe it should be enhanced to uphold community engagement that involves the public input and implementation for a bottom-up approach. It should be civilian-led, not merely inclusive of civilians. Additionally, I'd like to encourage the city to expand their engagement of community leaders and activists who are trusted and respected by the public. It's my understanding that the community leaders from certain grassroots organizations have not been included, they've just been included when convenient to the city. So, community leaders who are directly with victims of police violence should be involved at every level and every opportunity. This is a necessary step to achieve public trust. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. For our staff, do we have anyone after Kelly?
Mayor, no, we do not.
All right, our final speaker today will be Kelly.
Hello. I join many in opposition to a civilian oversight policy that doesn't have independent investigations and community participation in policy writing. Since February, you've revealed an empty promise, and your actions do not match your words. You're attempting to create an office that gives a three-million-dollar unchecked free pass to the police department's current investigative process. The whole point is accountability and transparency. You have not listened, and you need to represent the people. This behavior is not acceptable in my position, in my profession, and it should not be accepted for those who are supposed to ethically serve the people of Phoenix. Phoenix Police Department kills people, and nothing is done to decrease the harm of them. They falsely charge people speaking out against police brutality. Enough with this status quo. We cannot wait and trust you or a random future office director, and especially not the police, to keep police accountable and people safe. The proposed policy lacked a community-oriented drafting process, does not, does more harm than good, and only protects your image with a performance to appear that you care. Stop wasting time. Either delay the vote until community demands can be honored, or vote no. Gaps in the ordinance and strength of public reporting by the office need to be changed. Directly impacted people must have a central seat at the table. As it is now, we do not support the civilian oversight policy. You have to get it right by including independent investigations and community participation in the policy writing. As it is now, this policy is not better than nothing and puts community members' lives on the line. Vote no.
Thank you. Okay, so we have now had everyone who is waiting for public comment?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, one moment. We are checking just to make sure. Mayor, it does appear we have one more person, Janelle Woods.
Wonderful. We will go to Janelle for our grand finale.
Hello, can you all hear me?
We can.
All right. So greetings, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and, and council members. My name is Janelle Woods, and I'm with the Black Mothers Forum. And I've been waiting, and my heart has just broken in two, listening to all that I've listened to for this past hour. And we have always been in full support of the Office of Accountability and Transparency and a civilian review board all along, and have been several meetings to express our support. Now, I just learned like yesterday afternoon that a lot of my black and brown and my indigenous sons and daughters felt that they have not been told the truth as far as how this ordinance was supposed to be. And I've heard it repeatedly for the last hour and a half that we want to have an independent investigation. But I understand their position, but I also want to be clear that we cannot cut off our nose despite our face. We have got to proceed with what we have started. There have been many, many people, many years, fighting for this type of office, many, many years. And for it to go down in flames, and people tell us that they're opposed to it because of some certain language, we will fight for that. We've been fighting for this stuff all this time. It is time that we proceed. And so it has to start somewhere. We will not be perfect, but we must adjust along the way. This is what civil rights is all about. We don't get it perfect the first time, but we keep on trying. We keep on fighting. So I want our city council to keep on fighting for what's right for the people. My heart breaks for the families that have lost their love to police brutality. You all know how I feel about that. And I am tired of the threats, and I am tired of the harassment. But I am not going to sit here and stand by and allow an opportunity for us to get this ball rolling to stop. So please, do what you need to do. Be courageous leaders today. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Going back to Councilman DeCecio's questions. For our city attorney, will you explain the city procedure related to citizen petitions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As everyone is aware, the city charter has a provision that allows a citizen of the city to appear at a regular meeting and present a petition in writing. And the charter requires that the council has to act on that position, on that petition, in the regular course of business within fifteen days. The action, act on the petition could mean a wide variety of things, and the council has done a wide variety of things on these petitions in the past. Things, actions have been things like accept the petition, reject the petition, request to study the issue, or request a report, or direct staff to prepare a recommendation, or take some kind of action. There have been a lot of different actions that have been taken. For about the last year, the city developed a procedure, and it has been in place for the last year, that all citizen petitions submitted have been placed on the next agenda of the Land Use and Liveability Subcommittee for consideration by the Subcommittee for, and then direction on either further study or some action at that Subcommittee. The Subcommittee happened to have met today, so that any petition filed today or the next meeting would be placed on the next agenda for that Subcommittee, which is scheduled for December sixteenth.
Mayor.
So just to clarify, this conversation will continue. One action the Liveability Subcommittee could take would be to refer this back to the Public Safety Subcommittee. The Public Safety Subcommittee has been working on these issues for a very long time. We have also had multiple study sessions. We just recently had a policy meeting, and we have talked about it at multiple formal meetings. But we will continue to have this conversation. Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you for that, Mayor. So the question's to Chris. The, the ordinance itself is pretty clear that it has to go to the council. Doesn't say it has to go to a Subcommittee. Just because we determine a Subcommittee has, is not what the law says. It says by the council, it has to be heard by the council in fifteen days. So tell me where that's legal.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the charter says it has to be acted on by the council. It doesn't say the full council. It doesn't say that it has to go on a formal meeting agenda, and that has not happened with several petitions in the past. This procedure was implemented about a year ago and has been in place with the, the council's knowledge. So there wasn't, I don't recall whether there was a vote to establish a procedure, but that is what was explained, and that has been, been being done with these petitions for the last year. So we're being consistent with that practice.
So your interpretation of the council is a Subcommittee?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, my, my interpretation is that the council has to look at what the citizen presented and determine whether or not to take any action or anything on it. It doesn't actually require anything other than somebody's looking at it. But they could deny it without studying it, they could accept it, or they can refer it for further study. In, in many cases, it is virtually impossible for staff to study an item and for the council to be ready to make a recommendation, the council to decide an issue in fifteen days. And sometimes, that's, that's possible, in other cases, it's not. So this procedure was set up so that every petition that gets filed gets the attention of the Subcommittee and consideration and discussion, and then the Subcommittee then decides whether it goes back to the council or what further study may be done by the staff.
Well, the interpretation does matter because the council that's written into the ordinance, which I think we both know what it says, I, I interpret it to be one way, and, but I need to hear from you, Chris, what your interpretation of the council is. You're saying basically sending it to a Subcommittee is, even though it's a subset of the council, is the council, correct?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, I believe that the intent of that provision is for the council to consider the item. The, the purpose is for the citizen ideas to be brought to the council for them to consider them. I don't think it requires that it be the full council at a formal agenda. So yes, I believe that putting it to a Subcommittee and then reviewing it is, is complying with the charter provision.
So an alternative path, then, that, so that, that could be buried because that's what people send things to Subcommittee, either they're hurt or they get buried there. So an alternative path would be for me, and I'm going to ask the mayor, uh, Mayor, if these two motions fail, I would like to have another motion on the table. Otherwise, I guess there's another path, too, that you can get three members of the council to schedule a vote. But I think this is an important enough issue that would be sent to the public for their, for their participation in this as well. So there is another path, right, Chris?
DeCecio, we have had this policy for over a year, and you have not brought up any concerns. I understand that you are firmly committed to delaying the implementation of the Office of Accountability and Transparency, but we have to be consistent. You can't change the rules when they are inconvenient for you.
Well, you can't change the rules either, Mayor, that are not legal. Mayor, you can't be rude to me. I'm allowed to have an opinion here, just as you are. I'm acting in a very civil way. I'm expecting civility back, Mayor. So I'd expect you to treat me in a, in a like manner that I'm treating everyone else right now. So I have a right to ask questions. I have a right to add comments. And I have a right to see if I can change a direction that I think is going to be harmful to the city.
And I think everyone knows that you oppose the Office of Accountability and Transparency. I think the record is, is very clear on that item. Councilwoman Pastor.
I just wanted to ask Chris. Chris, my understanding, as the mayor has stated, that this has been in the process. We changed our process, I think, a year and a half ago for citizen petitions. And it can legitimately go through the process of what we've created by having these subcommittees that ever since I've been elected, I've been part of subcommittees.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that is correct. I don't remember the exact timeline. I know it's been a year or more. And we reviewed that process and whether it complied with the charter provision at the time that that procedure and policy was adopted and, and established. And we've been following it since that time. Some petitions that came back to council under the old procedure were denied without really much consideration because of the timeframes. There was discussion about sending it to a Subcommittee, gave every petition some consideration from the council, which may have been more than a lot of them got before just because of the timeframe and the scope of some of the issues.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the table. Councilmember comments?
Mayor.
Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. This motion and the other one is all part of the national rhetoric, the national attacks on the police, part of the defunding police motions, or movement that's occurring across the nation right now. We are seeing what's happening around the entire country with this whole anti-police, defund the police movement. It's creating havoc. City of Phoenix is about to become, if we pass this and the next one, like Minneapolis, Portland, or Seattle, where they've got nothing but havoc going on there. That's all this is about. This is hidden in a, basically a language of trying to make it sound good, when in fact, it's all part of the national movement to destroy our police departments, destroy our citizenry, and make our citizens unsafe. Thank you, Mayor.
Council, Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I mean, I, I just think we just need to move on with, with the motion that Councilwoman Pastor put, put on the table. I think that the thing that I think majority of us in the council have in common is that we want to make sure that our community is safe. We, we always pride ourselves of being innovative and coming up with new solutions and things that are gonna, that are, that are gonna work for our constituents. I think we've been listening to all of our constituents, whether they're for or against it or in the middle. And I think at the end of the day, I think the goal for all of us is to make sure that we have a safe city, that, that our constituents are safe, that, you know, whatever part of our communities are, there are some disagreements with our police department, that we're able to bring those groups together as well. I think the majority of us are, are, at least I am. That's the place where I'm coming from, where, where is it where we can bring community together with, with our police department, and then also being able to have a safe city, which is something that a lot of our constituents pride themselves in and, and love their city and love living here. And they participate a lot. And I think at the end of the day, everyone participates because they have a, a goal in mind. And I think for us, it, it is to have a safe city, and it is to bring constituents and, and police together in the places that, that we need them to come together. But at the end of the day, as leaders in the city, like it's, it's our job to create a safer city. Thank you, Mayor.
Well said, Vice Mayor. Any final comments before we vote? All right, this will be a motion on Councilwoman Pastor's motion. Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Please do.
I want to, first of all, thank everybody that, that brought comments today. This has obviously been, been really been really difficult, and a lot of work for a lot of folks to get this done. I do believe this is a historic vote. It's the furthest this council has gotten on civilian oversight. Hearing Mayor Rose speak of them trying to do things in the 90s or trying to get this done in the 90s means it's been, it's at least a 30-year fight, and I know folks before that fought for accountability as well. I also want to acknowledge the pain in our community for the lack of accountability and transparency that we've had for a long time, and then, and that leads us to want to have perfection. But I also want to recognize that this office was never meant to end police brutality or end systemic racism. It's a part of it, it's a tool that is only going to work so long as community are engaged and work alongside with it, and eventually trust it. Also was impressed of the knowledge and the research and the understanding of our systems that folks spoke of today. How important the police union memorandum of understanding is. Many of us, including myself, never even understood how that happened, and the limitation it has given for accountability. And so I recognize that, and I'm excited to see what that conversation is like starting next month. Victims of police violence need and deserve a way to report harm that doesn't require them to talk to their abuser, and I do think that this office does that. It creates an office that's going to be open to those folks in a safer space. There's still a lot of work ahead of us. I hope that a lot of the folks on the call can come together and figure out how we make this the best way, the best office and how we implement Oat moving forward. I look forward to that work. Want to remind folks that CRV, the Civilian Review Board, which will accompany the Office of Accountability and Transparency, will go through a similar process of what we've gone through Oat to make the decisions of that creation. And I believe once we get those parts put in the right place, we will at least begin to address and have more transparency to be able to hold police accountable and have a better community, better quality of life, particularly for those that have been hurt by it. And so, final thought is, I don't know if I could look, you know, if an incident happens next week, or tomorrow, or today, I don't know if I could look that family in the eye and tell them that we had an opportunity to try something different. And to look them in the eye and tell them that our current status quo, which is not working, is the only route that they could take. And so with that, I vote yes.
Noakowski?
No.
Pastore?
I will explain my vote. What I would like to say is that Hannah's correct on my quote, and I still stand by it today. And I will always fight for the community and make sure that they have a voice in the process. I know that this ordinance may not go as far as the community wants, but like my dad taught me, that even if it's slower than what we want, progress is progress, and from here, we continue the work. So I will be voting yes.
Stark?
No.
Waring?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote. So I am adamantly opposed to this. You heard from the activists today who were in favor of it, and they sound like they're going to be disappointed, so it sounds like it's going to be an expensive disappointment. I don't think it does the things that activists expected, but I'm okay with that part, because I don't want it to pass. And I will say to any officers who are listening, I reject in the strongest possible terms the blanket statements talking about officers in the worst possible terms. That is just unacceptable. I don't know why people would make such blanket statements about public servants who are trying to get out there and just do the right thing. And I'm sorry that if any of you are out there listening, you had to hear that. But I am opposed to this, Mayor, and I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Williams?
I want to explain my vote. I keep hearing the community, the community, the community. But I firmly believe this should be on the ballot for the entire Phoenix community to have a say in it. I understand where many of the people who called in today are coming from, but I think this is serious enough and inflection, negative impact on officers. I think it's important that we have a fair ordinance that the entire community supports at all times, so no.
Guardado?
Yes.
There you go. Yes.
Yeah.
Motion fails four to five.
The substitute motion has failed. We will next go to a vote on the original motion, which is to adopt the ordinance as posted in today's packet. Do any council members have comments before we go to roll call?
Mayor, I do.
Councilman Noakowski, please go ahead.
I would like to ask, the person in charge of putting this together, I guess it would be Milton. So Milton, do we have any outreach to the community? Was there community involvement in any way? Because that's one of the themes throughout this discussion, is that there was a lack of community involvement. What I wrote down some of the key points that each individual said was that there was not enough transparency, don't trust the system because it was done behind closed doors, the community's not focused, wasn't, didn't have their input, the policy was created in secrecy, the community was not involved, does not, doesn't have an independent investigation power. Basically, it just goes on and on and on. So I just wanted to make sure that if there was community input, if you could tell us what the community input was.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Noakowski. I don't remember the exact first date of the first session we had in the Orpheum Theater, but from that night forward, there have been multiple meetings, multiple work studies, where everything associated with this topic was discussed in the open. When we got to the point where council made a decision on choosing Model A or Model B, and council chose Model B, and we started trying to draft processes to fit Model B, we were transparent in the language. It was made available. There were comments received from the public at nearly, not necessarily all of the work studies, but at other sessions. We did have people making comments or submitting input to us along the way. Between the first draft and the ordinance that is before you today, there were multiple iterations. Those were shared with various members of the community that requested to see them. Some people submitted questions or responses or reactions to it. And that brings us to today. I can't speak for people who have whatever opinion they have, but the staff has been very transparent and responsive to what we were asked to do.
If I could also add, Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, we as staff work under the direction of the city council. The city council has had at least, I think, two work-study sessions and a policy session, in which the ordinance language has been made available for your comment, as well as there is public comment available at the policy session. So the public input, the drafting, was done for the benefit of the council to review, and then the community to also participate in. So that is the process that we used, in addition to some of the informal methods that Mr. DeHoney mentioned.
So there wasn't really a community forum that we went out and explained the B, that we chose B, and what we wanted to be input into the B session, right?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, the council did not...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The B model, I'm sorry.
Yeah, understood. The council did not direct community forums. The council adopted a policy. Mr. DeHoney and his staff began putting that together. We brought it back to council meetings for public review, for the council's review, and I guess the public forum would have been the council meetings where there was discussion by the council, in addition to the informal discussions that Mr. DeHoney mentioned.
And then, just for the record, we actually have three different boards, right, when it comes to oversight on police officers from use of force board, where if there's a shooting or somebody dies in custody, that board is a mixture of civilians and police officers. Is that true?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, I would just clarify that I wouldn't classify those as oversight boards. What they are is they are advisory boards to the police chief, but they are constructed as you described. There are some civilians and police officers who review, for example, as you mentioned, use of force, and they give their review of that, their overview of that, to the chief for her consideration as she makes her decision on discipline in that case, or whether the use of force was in policy.
And the use of force, who appoints those individuals? The laity?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Noakowski, there is a pool of people that are available when a case comes up, and so they select from the pool to serve on either the disciplinary review board. And as you indicated, it is advisory to the police chief.
So Milton, is it something that runs through the mayor and the council, or is it something that goes through the city manager, or goes to the police chief that chooses those individuals, or chooses from that, to put people on that poll, that you have a poll of individuals, right?
Yes. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Noakowski, there is a process by which people submit some type of letter of interest or application. I'm not exactly what the form looks like, but people from the community indicate they want to participate on one of those boards, and that's why there's a pool of people that's always active. The process goes through the police department, and they use different people for different cases, so it's not the same set of individuals hearing disciplinary cases that are going through the administrative process.
So Milton, once again, maybe I'm not explaining it right. So who actually appoints those individuals from that pool of individuals that are on that list for the use of force board?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Noakowski, that's a police-appointed group or pool of people, ultimately the chief of police.
All right. And then how about the discipline review board? There's another board, right? It's when some, when a police officer has some misconduct, and also that's a mixture of police officers and civilians. Is that right?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Noakowski, that is correct. It's a member of police officers and civilians that's involved in that process. It's to give advice to the chief as they're going through the deliberative process.
And is that appointed by the mayor, by the city manager, by the chief, or by the council?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Noakowski, it ultimately is the police chief or the police department, because the people come from the same pool I was referring to earlier.
All right, I thought it was something that the mayor actually appoints. I'm sorry about that. And then the last board, is it the civic service review board, is it?
Civil service.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all civilians, right?
Mayor, yes.
Mayor, members of the council, yes. The civil service board is appointed by the mayor and city council. There are five members. They are all civilians, non-city employees. It is their job to, they're established through ordinance related to our civil service system, and so they are the last line of appeal for employees, including police officers, who would appeal their discipline. It's not, it's, they have the final say on discipline for employees in the civil service system who use that appeal process, and that could be police officers or any other city employee who is covered by the civil service system.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that individuals know that there's three different boards that are out there, and just what the process is, and who actually serves on, and who chooses those individuals. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Pastore.
Mr. DeHoney, can you go, it seems like we're talking about the process, the different processes of discipline review board, PSB. Can you walk through those processes and those committees or boards?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Pastore. So if you think in terms of an entire system or a process that has been in place for quite a while, let's say there is an allegation against an officer. You would first, there is first a determination, is the allegation against the officer criminal in nature. So there is a criminal investigation to determine if that is so. If it is so, that information, that case, if you will, is forwarded to the county attorney's office. However, on the administrative side of the House, PSB or Professional Standards Bureau, in other cities, that's referred to as Internal Affairs, conducts an administrative process to determine if the actions of the officer was against policy. As they are conducting that investigation, at some point, they will render a determination that to either sustain the charge, which means they believe the officer is guilty of the infraction. And so at that point, you have to determine what is the proper discipline or corrective action. That's where the disciplinary review board comes into play. So that is a separate set of people that are looking at that same case. It's trying to provide advice to the chief that, yes, we believe this person is guilty of the infraction. And then there's this determination of what should the punishment be. So a mixture of police and civilians give advice to the chief. We think it ought to be a suspension, or we think it ought to be a termination. But ultimately, when the chief reviews that, it is the chief's authority to determine, this person is suspended, this person is fired. So the chief is not bound by the advice that she's given. If she makes a choice that the person is going to be either suspended or terminated, that individual still has rights. And so they can choose to challenge the action that the chief took. Their recourse is to take that case to the civil service board that is appointed through council, has five individuals, and so they have the authority to overrule the chief. They can say, yes, the person did it, but termination is too severe, or yes, the person did it, but, I'll just make this up, 100-hour suspension is too severe, we think it ought to be 40, and their word is final. That's the process that's in place right now.
Thank you, Milton. Any additional council member comments?
Mayor?
We will go to Councilwoman Pastore.
And Mr. DeHoney, can I get some clarity on this? As you went through the several boards, Oat would be very different from that, wouldn't it?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Pastore... Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Pastor, yes, it would. So there's two phases of it. The first, and what is before you today, is to establish the office, create the staff. And so the staff that would be hired, which does not exist today, would have the ability to join in the process of investigating police officers who have charges leveled against them, not criminal charges, but administrative. So they would be able to not only be present as people are questioned, but they would be able to ask questions themselves. If, when the conclusion of the administrative process is made, and let's say the Professional Standards Bureau gives the chief a conclusion that they've drawn, the OAT office, under the leadership of the OAT director, can say, we do not agree with that. And they can provide a separate conclusion based on the investigation. They can say that the investigation was not thorough. They could say that it's not been done fairly. They can say that it is incomplete. They can also say that they agree with the conclusion and that it was fair because they participated or witnessed it. Those are things that do not exist today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor. Roll call on the original motion to adopt the ordinance as posted in today's packet. DeCiccio? DeCiccio?
Mayor? Oh, that was weird.
Yes.
Can you guys hear me now? Yeah, we're having some technical difficulty. Now I have to do star six. But I'd like to have the opportunity, if this fails, to make another motion. My vote is no on this right now.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I believe we should have some type of a community outreach where it's transparent, where people can actually have some input and that it's, and that everybody understands what we're going through. Just having the majority of the people that were actually pushing for this, asking us to vote no on it, says that we haven't done that community outreach that we should have. And that's the reason why I'll be voting no. And hopefully in the future, we can get back together and do some type of process where the community feels they have some say-so on it. Thank you.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
No.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
No.
Guardado?
Yes.
Baiego?
Yes.
Pales four to five. It is clear to me that we don't have consensus on this item. We are moving to item thirty-five. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item thirty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. DeCiccio?
Hold on a second, Mayor, I'm trying to get to item thirty-five. I was pretty engrossed in this last vote here. Good thing it lost. Yes, I'm voting yes on that.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Baiego?
Yes.
Passes eight-one. We next move to a positive one for our city, the adoption of the new street name to replace Robert Ely Street. This is a street in Council District One and Two. I will turn to Councilwoman Williams, who represents part of the impacted.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you have a motion? One second. Following the process set by the city council on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty, for property owners on Robert Ely Street to vote on their top choice for a new street name. And based on the results showing their clear top choice, I move that the council formally adopt the new street name of Desert Tecta Street to replace the previous name of Robert Ely Street to be effective March first, twenty-twenty-one, in accordance with the council action taken on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty, to rename the street. That's the motion.
Thank you, councilman. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you all for your leadership on this important item. We do have one member of the public to address the council, Jeremy Healthcott. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council, Jeremy Healthcott. Pleased to speak before you again. I appreciate the opportunity, as always. I just want to, one will have to measure if the board, I think it's been three years that I've been appearing before you on items related to this. I hope today we can finally see this through. It is, as the mayor said, a very positive step forward for the image of our city and for our city as a whole. I encourage you to vote yes, and I thank you very much. If there are any questions, of course, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thanks for sticking with us throughout this process. Council member comments? Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Baiego?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero. The city of Phoenix has changed the street name. We next move to item forty-six, which is the adoption of a new street name to replace S Peak Drive. This street is in Councilman DeCiccio's district, so I will turn to him for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor, but before I do that, I mean, I want to know how I got muted in the last debate. Does staff have the ability to mute me? Or, I mean, that was weird. I've never had that situation happen before. Does anyone have the ability to mute me? Or I couldn't talk?
Mayor, this is the city clerk.
Can I, Ed? Can you answer that, Ed?
Mayor, this is the city clerk.
I don't know if it was a computer glitch.
Councilman DeCiccio, hopefully you can hear me. The staff does have the ability to mute anyone that is on the line, especially if there's any feedback. And so in this case, it does appear that there was some feedback, and therefore your line was muted.
Okay, that's why I was having a hard time getting on. I was like, that was weird. Yeah, I'm having some difficulty with the phone. Pride of forty-six, following the process set by the city council September sixteenth, twenty-twenty, for property owners on this drive to vote on their top choice for a new street name. And based on the results showing their clear top choice, I move that the council formally adopt the new street name of Mountain Trail Drive to replace the previous name that most found offensive, including myself. And to have this be effective March first, twenty-twenty-one, in accordance with the council action taken September sixteen, twenty-twenty, to rename the street.
Second.
Thank you, councilman. We have a motion and a second from Councilwoman Williams. We have multiple members of the public to address the council on this item. We will go first to Ginger Sykes Torres. We can.
You can, okay. It's like I could do it. Oh, Honorable Mayor Baiego and honorable city council members, thank you for leading the charge on the street name change. Changing the name of the street shows that our city values diversity and inclusiveness, which helps create a healthier community for all residents. Changing the street name sends a positive message that derogatory and offensive terms are unacceptable in our public spaces and also serves as an example for our community and the private sector. As a Navajo woman and a mother to three young Navajo children, thank you all for your leadership on this. In my opinion, the most logical name for the street is Piestoa Peak Drive because the road ends at the trailhead leading up to the top of our city's most prominent peak. In addition, this name would also honor a leader, protector, and role model for indigenous women, as well as honor the sacrifices of our fallen heroes and veterans. Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership, and thank you to the city for holding the opportunity for all voices to be heard on this issue, especially those of the Native American community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be James Kovarubias, followed by Jeremy Healthcott.
Some members. My name is, hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Jim Kovarubias. I'm an Arizona native, US Army veteran, and Native American and a resident of Phoenix. I'm an artist. My latest online exhibit is titled Separation of Children at the Border. The narrator of this video, Ms. Gita Farid, gives us a powerful unforgettable phrase when speaking about the plight of incarcerated children. Use your love to solve problems, not your hate, she advises. When we truly love a place, we need to love the history of that place. When America annexes state, they kept the native name Arizona. This cultural honoring applied to many historical Spanish and Native American place names for cities, mountains, rivers, et cetera. Tucson, Yuma, Gila River, Berrin River, Chiricahua Mountains, Huachuca Mountains, and so on. This is part of our beautiful state's charm. It adds a romantic charisma to the uniqueness of Arizona and a certain cultural respect to the diversity of our history. I envisioned Piestoa Peak Drive in that same charming context. It's a noble patriotic name that will engender a charm to that beautiful neighborhood. It's the entryway to Piestoa Peak, already famous internationally. Piestoa Peak Drive will be attached to the beautiful place names unique to our state. It honors veterans, Native Americans, women, and our cultural legacy. It is the place we love. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Jim. Jeremy will be next, followed by Ernest Martinez.
Can you hear, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you again, Mayor, members of the council, Jeremy Healthcott. Once more, if I may, I will, for the record, let my comments on item forty-five stand again on this item. And once again, I encourage you each to please vote in support of this measure. And again, I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Wonderful. Thank you for your support. Ernest Martinez is next, followed by Shaylin Shaby Young.
I'm Ernest Martinez, a homeowner at the base of Piestoa Peak for thirty years. I'm the coordinator of the Piestoa Fallen Heroes Sunrise Service and the Gold Star Reception and Dinner held the night before every year. I applaud the city council on its landmark action last September sixteenth to eliminate the derogatory S-word from the street. The survey results in the reported issue, only thirteen of twenty homeowners responded. I urge the city council to consider the recommendations made previously during an exhaustive public input process to determine a name. About a hundred and ninety comments were received during three public hearings and two months of public comment. An overwhelming majority recommending names chose Piestoa Peak Drive. At the last hearing, for example, for the Native American community, Lori Piestoa's mother, Percy, stated she would be humbled and honored to have the street named after her daughter, which would also stand for the sacrifices of all our fallen heroes and veterans without which this country would not be free. At the same hearing, State Representative Orlando Teller, a member of the State Committee on Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, stated that the epidemic was due in part to words like the S-word that dehumanized women. The name Squaw Peak stood for a hundred years as a reflection of that. It took Lori Piestoa's sacrifice to finally change it. Naming the street Piestoa Peak Drive would acknowledge that and help again to undo the harm made by the Squaw Peak word. Thank you.
Thank you. Shaylin will be next, followed by Linda Grass.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and Mayor Baiego. My name is Shaylin Shaby Young Yate. I am an enrolled member of the Navajo Nation. I'm a homeowner here in Phoenix. I'm using my voice to stand in support of the name change to Piestoa Peak Drive. First, I would like to express my gratitude to the Phoenix City Council who voted to eliminate the old name. My, I want to acknowledge what a tremendous amount of growth we would gain from moving from the old name to Piestoa Peak Drive. I respectfully ask our leaders to consider the fact that we have the opportunity to make a positive change moving forward to say that this change went from a marginalizing term to a name that honors our fallen modern-day hero. It speaks like a beacon of hope into equality. I also, it also acknowledges a woman who made a painstaking sacrifice for our country. She was a woman who was a member of not one tribe, but of two, Navajo and Hopi. And we uplift her name and acknowledge her name, Lori Piestoa. And we hope that you would do the same. Thank you.
Linda will be next.
I'm sure you folks are worn out by now, so I appreciate you listening. The Native American community was appeased by the mayor and city council members voting back in September to eliminate the name Squaw Peak Drive. Their wish has now been granted. The homeowners have been made to suffer over the last four years of this fiasco for something we did not cause. Back in two thousand seventeen, you attempted to make this change without the homeowner's knowledge. Then when we accidentally learned of the former mayor's plans, we submitted a petition showing the majority of the homeowners did not want the change, a move that was within city policy to stop the change. So the council changed the policy to override the homeowners. Although the mayor and council's proposed name of Piestoa Peak Drive truly is not eligible name, an eligible name, based on the exact words of the current policy, we were told in the last community meeting that it was okay. While the homeowner's survey shows that it clearly is not okay, that we feel Lori Piestoa has been sufficiently honored and that we don't want to contend with the issues that surround the use of that name, that it's hard to spell, hard to pronounce, or understand for people not familiar with this area. So now it should be time for the council to appease the homeowners by renaming the street with our first choice, Mountain Trail Drive. I stress that we must live with the new name on a daily basis from now on. And from the survey results, it's clear that we want something other than Piestoa Peak Drive. The Native Americans got their wish when you removed what some consider to be a derogatory term. So they should no longer be upset in seeing the new name of the street if on some rare occasion, they happen to drive past on Lincoln Drive or drive up to the park. We, as homeowners, are left to deal with the new name and the changes it will require going forward. So please at least choose the name Mountain Trail Drive, which should not be offensive to anyone and is a perfect fit for the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Jesse Arie.
Yes, this is Jesse Arie. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
To the Honorable Mayor Baiego, city council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I lived for fifty-one years near the base of Piestoa Peak Mountain. Much of my comments were made at an earlier subcommittee meeting on this issue. And I still believe that the street name should be Piestoa Peak Drive. The reason being this. You should give name- The reason being this: You should give name to a street that has meaning. It took over 20 years to get the mountain itself changed. Camelback Road was given its name because it's the street that goes directly to Camelback Mountain. Indian School Road was given its name because it's the street that goes directly to the historic Indian school. Central Avenue was given its name because it's the central location of the city. Therefore, the street leading directly to Piestoa Peak Mountain should be Piestoa Peak Drive. It's my feeling that it may not be the appropriate name for the six property owners who ranked it as their first choice, but it's the correct one, especially since the cost of those changes will be covered by the budget. I urge you to rename the street Piestoa Peak Drive since it's the only road that leads directly to the Piestoa Peak Mountain. From Jesse Arie, member of the Madison School District and served on the State Board of Education for two full-year terms, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arie. Thank you for your longtime service to this community and our state. That is our final comment on this item, so we will turn to council members for comments. Councilwoman Pastor.
Mayor, I've received several emails and several calls regarding the process and the name changing and how it went about. And we did postpone the vote in order to have other neighborhoods participate or the neighbors participate in this process. But it has been a long... A long journey to get to where we are today. And after hearing what everybody had their testimony, I would like to make a substitute motion. Okay?
The floor is yours.
Okay. I move to formally change the name S-Peak Drive to Piestoa Peak Drive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Garcia. Any additional council comments?
Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio.
Yeah, I like the idea of Piestoa Peak, but again, the way we set up the ordinance required the individuals that lived on the street to have a major say on it. So, I mean, there's probably going to be something else we're able to do. I think she's an American hero, needs to be honored. She's honored with, you know, a mountain within our city. But at the end of the day, we did set up that plan and that process for those individuals to get involved in it, and that's the name that they chose. Again, I would love to see that, and I think it'd be fantastic. However, you know, I... I won't be able to support this only because, you know, the citizens in that area have a right and have a determination what they want in their own city and their own area. But other than that, I think she's an amazing person. The fact what she did for our country is just indisputable. But again, that's not what we have in place. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. We have had a robust process, and I really appreciate our city staff, led by Mario Panayagua, who moved forward with this process. Mario, could you take us through how the council has established our policy for offensive street names and the meetings and our options? I guess, going forward from here, would our policy allow Councilwoman Pastor's motion?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. So, back in accordance with the process that the council set up in 2017, Mayor, the process was initiated with a memo from you, Mayor, and Councilwoman Williams to add an item to the July 1st agenda to initiate the process for... Which essentially kicked off a community input process on the renaming of both Robert Lee Street and S-Peak Drive. And so with that action by the council on July 1st to initiate that process, staff was then directed to conduct community meetings. And because of the pandemic, those community meetings included virtual community forums, and the council authorized us to do those virtually. And so we conducted actually more than the required two meetings. We conducted three public meetings to get input on S-Peak Drive and the new name for that. And so with that, several... There were several members who participated, members of the community who participated, along with residents who lived on that street as well. And it was a mix of input, both many... As the comments came in, many indicated that they would support a name change to Piestoa Peak, and there were other names submitted as well. On September 16th, the council then took an action to go ahead and rename the streets. But what the council did was decided to hold off on actually picking the new name of the street because the idea was to get additional input specifically from the property owners of that street. Those were going to be the most affected by the name change, to give them the opportunity to identify what their top choice would be. So we did that process. We conducted a survey on S-Peak. It was... It was 20 property owners that were mailed those surveys. 13 of them responded, which is actually a very strong response rate, and the top score came out to Mountain Trail Drive. Piestoa Peak was also in the mix but did not achieve the top score in the results. So that's what's before you today, Mayor, is that proposal to change the name with the input of those specific property owners, and their top choice was Mountain Trail Drive. And Mayor, just to amplify, Mr. Panayagua, the report on page 153 describes that the council's process was to allow property owners to take an advisory vote on their preferred names, but it was always part of the process that the council has the ultimate authority on the exact name.
Thank you very much. Yeah, there were some creative names submitted, for sure. And thank you, Mario and your team, for all the time you put into this to making sure that we have street names that reflect our values. We really appreciate all of that. I am also grateful to the Intertribal Association of Arizona, who allowed me to attend their meeting to discuss this. We are looking forward to having street names that reflect our values. We don't want shadows of the Confederacy or for a young girl like the daughters we talked about here today to see that street name as they drive to school or about in our community. So appreciate the council's work on this. Mario, did you have a comment?
Mayor, one clarification on the substitute motion made by Councilwoman Pastor. We would just like to have an effective date tied to any action on the new name so that we can make sure to have the time known to the community when that name change will occur.
What do you recommend?
And Mayor, may I... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
What we had in place... What we have in a recommendation is for March 1st, 2021. And maybe just to clarify, Councilwoman, we would assume your motion... You amended only the part of Councilman DeCecio's motion on the name, but the remainder of Councilman DeCecio's motion, which included that effective date and other language, we would assume was underlying that, and you just simply changed the name in that motion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that... Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman DeCecio.
May I ask Mario a quick question?
Please do.
So the Native American community, which was important for them to be consulted with this, did anybody raise any concerns at all that with this name that was chosen?
Mayor and Councilwoman... Or Councilman DeCecio, we... I think you've heard from some members of the Native American community today, their preference for Piestoa Peak Drive. And we did have significant input during our public process earlier in the summer where several members of the Native American community indicated their preference for Piestoa Peak Drive.
From my end, I'm just glad we're getting rid of the old name. It's something that I've wanted to see for several years now, and I do appreciate the mayor moving it forward. We had an opportunity to do that many years ago, and we didn't do it. But again, it comes down to the policy of the individuals in that area, and I'm going to be supporting them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I agree with you. The most important step is to remove this street name. Appreciate Councilwoman Williams' leadership in joining me in the memo to move this forward. Any additional council member comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I, like everybody else, I'm glad that we're removing the name. And having heard the testimony today, I think it's important that we also do something to repair the harm. And so the testimony I heard today, and I'd spoken to Mario earlier in the week, and I'd asked the same question Councilman DeCecio asked about what were folks asking for. And so I think a lot of the comments that were received or native community said they were just glad it was gone. And so I think that's an appropriate answer, a humble answer. But I think it's on to us now to make sure that if we have an opportunity to actually repair harm and honor an indigenous woman that's by that mountain, I think we should take that opportunity. And I understand the neighbors who might have lived there for a while or might be gone next year are also there, but I think it's important if we could use this opportunity to honor Piestoa, knowing that this road leads to it, and begin that healing of the damage that we caused by naming it S-Peak. So that's why I seconded the motion and thank Councilwoman Pastor for taking this on, and I recognize it's somewhat last minute, but I think hearing the testimony really was really important for me.
Oh, Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio.
Yeah, I'm very conflicted on this because I'm agreeing with Laura Pastor and Carlos Garcia, you know? I'm okay with this name change going to Piestoa because it does honor a great woman, and it is the main entryway into the mountain. And quite frankly, I'm probably just going to vote for it myself just because I'm glad we got rid of that name change, the name that was there before. And I know I'm going to catch some heck on this stuff, but at the end of the day, it is an honor to a woman who was an American hero. It is an honor because we have an entire mountain dedicated to this American hero, and it makes logical sense to send the roadway going up to that mountain to have her name on it and to have her namesake on it. So I'm going to be supporting it, and I do appreciate Laura bringing it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DeCecio. Lori Pastor is certainly a true American hero, and it will be wonderful to honor her with a street name in Phoenix. Any additional council member comments? Roll call. DeCecio?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Um, yes, can I explain my vote?
Please do.
Um, yes, I'm going to be voting yes on this. I mean, I think this is amazing that it's coming right after Veterans Day. It's a great honor for our Native American and U.S. military veteran. And she was an amazing leader, a native leader, and I think this is very exciting for everyone in our community. So I'll be voting yes.
Gallego? Yes. Passes 9-0. The council has now unanimously renamed two streets in the city of Phoenix. Congratulations, Lori Piestoa's family. Congratulations to all involved. We next move to a public hearing, item 56, on the Downtown Enhanced Municipal Services District Assessments. I will open the public hearing. We do not have any members of the public to address the council on this item, so I will close the public hearing. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. We have a motion to approve item 56.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And for our staff, does that motion meet our requirements?
Yes, Mayor.
Wonderful. Any comments? Roll call. DeCecio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams? Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Yes. Passes 7-2. Item 57 is the authorizing of the invoices for 2021 Downtown Enhanced Municipal Services District. Do we have a motion, Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve item 57.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams. Any discussion? Roll call. DeCecio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Yes. Passes 7-2. Thank you. Appreciate our downtown partners helping us to build a strong downtown for our future. We move to item 62, Distributed Antenna System Solicitation Request. We'll move... Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 62.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We do have members of the public to address the council on item 62. We will begin with Ben Benulis, followed by Megan Casely.
Hi, my name is Dr. Benjamin Benulis. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to propose distributed antenna system using 5G technology that the city wishes to build at Sky Harbor Airport. As a healthcare provider, I see many people with chronic disease, including those with electromagnetic sensitivity. You're attempting to solve a problem with wireless connectivity in Sky Harbor Airport in a way that will be very unsafe for residents, travelers, and airport employees. 5G or fifth-generation wireless technology deploys xenobiotic pulse-modulated microwave radiation, wavelengths ranging from 20 inches to .1 inch, which are in addition to the existing 3G and 4G wavelengths. Microwave radiation in these wavelengths is hazardous because it's maximally absorbed by human, animal, and insect bodies. Microwave radiation effects on human health is one of the most studied phenomena in science. The U.S. and other militaries studied the effect of radar and other microwave weapons in the years leading up to World War II. Through 20,000 studies document the adverse biological effects of microwave radiation on humans and other animals. Harms occur at tendencies far below the FCC International Maximum Guidelines, and such a willful ignorance has been a scam from day one. The deployment of microwave radiation on Phoenix residents, and airport employees, and visitors without their knowledge or consent will result in certain harm. Local government cannot lawfully shirk its duty to deliver public safety. Instead, facility and airport can opt for safe technology. High-speed fiber optic underground cable can be robbed at the airport as well as homes and businesses in the city of Phoenix without the dangers of exposing residents and visitors to unsafe levels of microwave radiation. without the dangers of exposing residents and visitors to unsafe levels of microwave radiation. Individual homes and businesses and public buildings like Sky Harbor can then opt for Wi-Fi at the premises that supports user data needs without the undue microwave radiation. We need a new safe strategy to deliver high-speed connectivity to the city of Phoenix using fiber to the premises instead of beaming unsafe levels of microwave radiation at all citizens and visitors. The city of Phoenix can adopt a wireless ordinance that caps the maximum effective radiating power coming off of 5G towers to allow for telephone calls, nothing more. I've expressed no matters of mere concern, but solely matters of substance, fact, and law.
Thank you. I understand that Megan is not, no longer with us, so we'll go to Doug Staub, followed by Shayna Cinnamon.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Gallego. My name is Doug Staub. I'm a precinct committee man for ALDE15. I'm also a certified EMF safety consultant. My first question would be, and it should be for everybody on the council, is what precautions has the council taken to assure the safety of the people of Phoenix? That is the single most important question that never gets asked and never gets approached. You know, there's not been enough tests done on 5G currently within the nation or within the system, other than over in Europe, which has clearly shown that 5G technology is harmful and dangerous to humans, animals, and the environment. You're talking millimeter wave technology here that affects you at a DNA level, also affects your eyes, your heart, and other bodily functions within you, and also can create a situation where you are antibiotic resistant. So this technology is something that needs to be explored and considered. And like the caller that was just previous, fiber optic technology is the only way to go if you're going to go 5G. It's safe. It allows people to actually enjoy the benefits without the danger. I yield my time.
Thank you. Shayna will be our final speaker on this item.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So 5G uses microwave radiation that we know is harmful to all life on Earth, and there is no research proving 5G is safe. There have been multiple countries and cities within the United States that have banned 5G over health and safety concerns. I think it's irresponsible of the city to put these up all over without concern for the safety of our residents and travelers passing through the airport. Also, this month, a white paper by the RTCA, a private-public aviation partnership that advises the Federal Aviation Administration warns that 5G could pose a major risk of harmful interference to radar on business jets and other civilian aircraft. So there are studies showing physical harm to human beings from 5G and also interference to aircraft radar. The term of this contract is for 10 years, and you don't want to commit to this and then a year or two down the line regret it. There are other options, the other people have said. We can't use fiber optic hardwired connections and have hardwired stations throughout the airport, just like we have outlet stations. This is also far more appealing than how the cell towers look. Please consider the impact this can have on our population's health and wellness and vote no. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final public comment on this item. Any council member questions? Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 8-1.
We next move to item 76, Materials Testing and Construction Administration on Call Services for Light Rail. Do we have a motion, Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve item 76.
Second.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams? Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 7-2.
That is our final agendized item for today's council meeting. We next move to public comment, and I will turn to our city attorney to introduce public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you. We have three members of the public to address the council. We'll begin with Marcus Reed, followed by Alicia.
Mayor, it appears that Marcus is not on the line.
We will go to Alicia, and our final comment will be Michael Felder.
Mayor, it appears that Alicia is also not on the line.
All right, Michael Felder, bring us home.
I apologize. Michael and Alicia were calling from the same number, and they are no longer on the line.
Thank you all for today's council meeting. We are adjourned.